And I'm going to call this meeting of the West Walkeny Economic Development Corporation to order starting at 5:37 PM. 5:30, oh, it's only 5:30, the clock up there is a little fast, but 5:30 PM. I'm gonna call it to order and we have everyone present so far. Cindy, except of course Cindy Phillips is on her way. And then Red Virus is not going to be with us today because he's had some health things that he's feeling down. We'll sit today, but we'll see him next month without a problem. And I want to start off by apologizing to everyone. I'm not going to be my normal jovial self. I think I've got some food poisoning from lunch. I'm not feeling very well. And so we will, I will get through this, but if you have trouble hearing me, let me know. Okay? Cindy is here. We knew you were on your way. All right, so if everyone will stand for the invitation. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for everything you've given us. Please bless this meeting today and help us make good decisions for the city, continue to best our city today and our nation. And please, we have special prayers for Red Virus that he do well today and that his family does well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Blessed are we in the seat of the Lord, in the United States of America. In two first Bible, for which it stands, what a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so for announcements, first I wanted to let y'all know the facade improvement grant program has all the, what we voted on last time has been put into the program itself and it is available for all citizens to be able to go and pick up. We have our EDC letterhead on the top of it and it is the program that is, was written up by the attorney several years ago from 2020 and was updated with the new information that we had in there, expanding the grants. The other thing I wanted to let y'all know is we have put together a welcome to business Walkeny folder. It, this is not the folder that it is, because I'm sure that Mary hasn't put the city stamp on it and wall material on it, but from the EDC portion of it, we've got components of our comprehensive plan. A thank you for coming and bringing your business here. The, this is just a sample folder. The card has my contact information on the back of it and a pin so all businesses that come in get this, every new business, so they know how to contact me and what grants we have available for them to be looking at. The To Walkeny Area Library and Texas Work Force Commission will host their jobs program this month and it's going to be on November 14th from 11 to 1. They really want to encourage everyone to come in and work on their resumes and work on getting their opportunity to get their jobs. I think that at some point, we will probably have a place down there where people who are looking for local jobs or have job openings for locally, we're going to put a bulletin board up down there and encourage businesses to go down and just stick a card up there to who they're looking for and what they're looking for. Because we do have some people who are out on next door neighborhood and Facebook asking for, had need to work. If anybody can hire me for a little, for a little bit, I could use some money. And so the library will be a place that they're going to start doing that. Billy Stone, that is our November business of the month. We appreciate all the years of service here to the community. The iHeart Voluntary Community Award Dinner is November 20th at 6 o'clock. And the Chamber of Commerce is taking nominations for local volunteers on their Facebook page. So you ring up to the chamber and make recommendations for who you think, you know, could win Volunteer of the Year. The Bingo Congregate Meals for Seniors, I'm assuming are still going on Kathy?
We're delivering meals on Friday, but we don't think bingo anymore. That's what they done at the church.
All right, so the Bingo is going on at the church on Friday.
On Wednesday.
On Wednesday, yeah. Okay. And the fire department is delivering the meals on Friday. Any other announcements? All right. Any citizen input? There are no citizens here, so that would be done.
I guess thank you.
They've had experience. I think our next meeting will be December 1st. Our next meeting will be December 1st and what that means is that look for my email to come to you about the agenda for Thanksgiving. The state law that went into effect on September 1st said that all meetings must have three business days to be posted between the day of posting, which does not count, and the day of the meeting that does not count. Holidays and weekends also do not count. So with that, we've got Thanksgiving, which is a holiday. Friday is considered a holiday and so the posting will be on the Wednesday before. So you're going to get a very early agenda, but our meeting will still be on the 1st of December. But that's because either Friday, December 1st or another couple of meetings here. Yeah, I think, I think we're looking at, I think I was looking at the 21st. The, the point is you're going to get it way earlier, that the meeting is going to be at the same time. All right, let's, let's move on to the consent agenda. Items A through C, approval of the EDC minutes from October 6th, approval of the bank statement for October, and approval of bills paid and to be paid. So as y'all are looking over some of this, I want to let you know that we have paid $900. We've got a $100 discount in our advertising budget for our advertising on the map, like the large picture of the map that when you go into the various fishing stores and DuckCo, they've got that there and we've updated that logo. So it is basically our card, our EDC card and it has, were you able to get the QR code? Yes. QR code is on the, so the QR code is on there so anybody can scan that and go straight to the city's website. And we got a $100 discount for doing it early. We also have paid approximately $396 for the public notice of our approved budget for 2025, 2026. So something that our predecessors were not doing, that you must do by law, is you must publish in the newspaper your projects when you're in EDC. So the way that we did this is, and we got approval at the Texas workshop that we went to back a week ago Friday, is we have published, we have a very detailed budget about the money that we have available for certain things. Our city council has already approved our budget, so that's why we're able to spend what we do within those categories as we choose. You know, we don't have to go to them for every expenditure that we do. And then we have published that budget so that the public can see and knows exactly what it is that we're using the money on. And that was the cost of publishing. If we make any changes, such as if we come back and we change or make a budget amendment, or we decide we're going to buy or spend money on something that we hadn't planned for, then that would have to go before city council and that would also have to be published in the newspaper. Then of course, $500 to the attorney and $68 reimbursing me for office supply. Does y'all have any questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll motion to approve the consent of that. I'll second. All in favor?
All in.
All right, so we'll go on to discuss and take action on the profit and loss statements for October 2025. Mary, is there anything that you feel like you need to update us on? Nothing that you just didn't already just go over? Obviously, there's a lot of new numbers. And keep in mind that we're not looking at these first three columns, we're looking at the last four, what's the year-to-date of our budget. Other than what you just went over, there's nothing any changes? All right, and the money that came in this month from the sales tax, how much was that in October? That should be on page two. And you can look at, does it match?
549277, is that the?
7497. No. That's, it's on there, I need to verify that she did get, I know she got it on the 8th of October. So, and this one is showing as of November, so it's not going to show what it is, but so far it's the 5492. That would be options, yes. Okay, so in the bank statement, that would be the credits of the 5494.
Is there a way to show two-year comparisons on statements in that way we can see if our revenue is increasing? Just, that way we know the increase is progressing or if there's a big gap in it, we know where to go looking?
I mean, I can, I can make a report like that. Pulling a report like that is not as easy, but I can look at making a report and kind of just see periodically how it goes.
There's no way to make it on to this actual sheet where it just shows like your year-to-date actuals and then like your 24 year-to-date actuals, that way you could see, we brought in 5492 this year.
This year, you want to see kind of what we did last year and the year before.
Right, and then we can see if we're growing or shrinking, if it gives us something to base us.
I could, let me see.
Yeah, no pressure, just a question. Especially with all the work that has been going into trying to get businesses to, and everybody to switch from 75474 Quinlan to West Walkeny, we need to show some improvement there if our efforts are paying off.
Any other questions about the profit loss? The chair will entertain a motion to accept the profit loss statement for October 2025.
I'll make a motion to accept the ENL statement for 2025.
I'll take Larry, only because he's sitting here, I heard him first. All in favor? All right, now we'll go on to item number eight, discuss and or take action on establishing a parking lot improvement grant program. All right, so in your packet, you have a copy of parking lot improvement program. It is the same general write-up, the same way that we did, we do the, excuse me, I really am feeling poorly. So, facade grant, so this is the write-up from the attorney. All I changed was instead of facade grants, I changed it to the parking lot grant. I did the grant range similar to what we approved for the facade grant, that if the project is, say, $2,500 to $50,000, that the grant be 10% of whatever the cost is that the business is going to be paying for it. So the range would be 250 to 5,000. We can change this at any time in the future. Right now, I look at the budget that we have for grants and we don't really have more than $5,000 left over with how we've expanded the facade grant. The reality is that right now, we don't have anyone coming to us for parking lot grants. We only have one other business who's talking about maybe needing help with a facade grant. And I think the facade grants carry a lot more weight right now, so I don't think we want to take our money from, you know, grants and move them over to parking lot grants just yet. Hopefully, at some point, we will be able to expand and do more. And so just for, I got this today, just so that you guys can look at home and keep for your record, this is the parking lot grant program that Emory's EDC does. Their particular write-up does not have as much protection for them legally as ours does, but we definitely would not want to convert and just use the way theirs is written up. And Emory, of course, as you know, has significantly more sales tax money to do that than we do. So they're offering $20,000. I would bet on the budget comparison to the money they probably have, our $5,000 probably is compared to. And I don't believe Quinlan has a parking lot grant program. But if y'all wouldn't mind looking through this real quick and seeing if this is okay, if y'all would like to go ahead and approve us using this so that we can get it available at city hall for businesses coming in. Something that just kind of stuck out, and I haven't looked at too much, is the one, Emory has a deadline to when to apply. Do we want to try doing something of that nature? Or you can get all the applications for the fiscal year at a certain deadline and then deciding? Or you want to go do it as a one-off opportunity for everybody? I think this is a one-off opportunity because the way ours is written up has the fiscal year listed in. It says you have to apply within the fiscal year and that if you apply, like if you come in, you're coming to the end of the fiscal year, the grants are gone, and they're gone. So you have to wait until the next fiscal year to be able to be paid. And originally, I will tell you, when I was, you know, looking at the facade grant, the facade's updating that, there were some things, when you first look at it, that you think, well, that's a lot for business to do. For example, they have to submit at least 10, they have to submit a minimum of 10 business days before we consider it. And you have to submit a number of copies to be able to receive it. And that's a good thing, because I can tell you right now, like when we did 10 cuts facade grant, having those copies already done and given to me was a blessing, because there is not any way I could sit there and do that with businesses coming in and doing that. And hopefully, we will get a lot as our, as we grow, hopefully, we will get a lot more businesses applying for these. And now they know, now they're starting to get the information out there that we have facade grants and the program's been put back on since 2020. We're now looking at doing this parking lot grant and we have the other grants that are also available. So if there's not any other things that are significant, and remember, guys, we can always change things. There is no, at any point that you look at something, you go home and you look at this stuff in here and you go, you know what? I really think we ought to alter this. Just send me an email, I'll put out the next agenda, we'll bring it up and we'll alter it.
So it can be a live document, not just saying one and done.
Everything in here is live document, everything in here, that would be amended, changed, whatever it is that we need to do for the benefit of the businesses and the citizens. And if we end up having somebody come in and hit survey, you know, I need $10,000 for my parking lot and here's what I'm going to do. And they've done something like they bought Big D's barbecue closed down place and they're fixing to turn that into a really great, amazing business and they need $10,000 for that parking lot instead. They just come in and mother snubbed that they would like to have more than that and then we hear it as a, you know, a special thing we've done and we look at it. So we're always able to do that with this. And the CDC has always done that historically, back years ago. I think it was Karen Houston, who had a special, it was a special grant. She received somewhere close to $30,000 in payments over time because she owned so many different businesses. Like she redid the facade on the apartment complex behind Big D. But she owns a lot of property and was doing a lot of work back then. And so there was a lot of grant money that went to her, so any business can come in and ask for special help.
Look, so, I mean, I think the, depending on when we wanted to hit our budget year, a cutoff may be necessary, but.
All right, so I would entertain a motion for us to approve this so we can get it started.
I'll make a motion to approve the parking lot grant program.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, guys. All right, so now let's move on to item number nine, discuss and or take action on establishing a city park improvement grant program. Whether we want to do that or not, we already last time had approved for me to get two bids to replace the two shingle pavilions in the park. And so this is going to be a part of this item. I have two bids. David Phillips has sent in a bid to cut no roofs on both of those pavilions for $8,600. And John English has put in a bid to do both for $6,400. And he also actually, he's put in a bid to do the roofs for $4,600 and he's added $2,800 because he would like to level the ground in front of our EDC building. He wants to build a front porch with a handrail. He plans to put in drainage pipes in front with rock all around and use treated wood. If we take his bid for $6,400, he would be doing those. Although looking at this, it looks like he's only given a bid for one of the roofs, not two.
Are both of these reputable contractors have done work on the city property before or what's the?
David's very reputable, both of them are very reputable. David is Cindy's husband, he's got a roofing company and so he does work all over the place. John is very reputable, he's the one who did all the remodeling on the interior of the building. And he does the bathrooms for the fire department and for various city halls and all. So if we're actually looking at apples to apples, then his bid to do two pavilions would be 9,200 and David's bid would be 8,600. Did I get that cleared up for you guys?
There's one. How does it work? So obviously, David's bid was briefly for the park, which is what we went out to bid for. The other bid has some other stuff tied in that.
What I did is I removed, the way that John did his, I just removed it. And I just did the one metal roof, it's 36 by 24 pavilion and there's two of them. So I just doubled it, so it'd be 9,200 for John, 8,600 for David. So do we want to actually establish, and we wouldn't be establishing it today, because I have to sit down and write it up, but I need y'all to make a motion if you want us to actually have me sit down and write up a park improvement grant program that we then would use with the city for any of the work that they do, that we do in the park. And here's why. Mary, I need to keep, you need to keep on your EDC hat here and not, not change over to city. The parks, the parks since the beginning of time have had a comprehensive plan with the city for what needs to happen to them. And this is just for y'all to take, come and read. After six of the parks improvement plan and what they wanted to do in the parks here, I've taken a copy of it from the comprehensive, I say the city of West Walkeny Plan from 1995. So I want you to know this city has always valued its parks and wants to, wanted not just this park, but other parks to be built around the city, including one on the south side of the city. They've got a location in there that they thought would be great to have a city park. So the parks are really important. I wanted everyone to have a copy of this on the floor for you to take home and to read at your leisure. My concern with us going in and just doing improvements in the park, like going in and doing the pavilion, is there seems to be a problem with the maintenance of the park and maintaining the money that gets spent with it. But if you recall, we just gave $1,800 for the bathrooms to be repaired at the park bathroom. And we are now, what, one month from those being done and the doors are already damaged by vandal. So, and door locks have since been replaced, but, but I am concerned about throwing good money after bad without holding the city accountable a little bit for doing something to maintain what we spend money on to make sure that it's going to be protected and it's going to be okay. That could include doing something like when we met over to have the EDC building inspected with Bure Veritas, one of the things that they suggested is that we needed to have a light put out by the bathrooms, that we need to move one of those cameras that the EDC paid for a couple of years ago that are around the city, have a camera over there on those park bathrooms to make sure that we don't have vagrants or vandals or drug use going on in there. They recommended that if there was a police car that's being left over here and behind, block up at city hall, leave a, use police car sitting next to the bathroom, that would keep people from coming in. We could ask the city to put up a sign on both sides of the bathrooms that says, you know, security camera monitoring. Maybe that would cause people to go out, they've got a camera and they have a sign and it's posted. So maybe I don't want to destroy that, something to that effect. I've also known that the EDC has paid some money in the past for the playground equipment and most likely, if we establish some kind of park grant program with the city, the EDC could offer to help do something to help repair and maintain the playground equipment. Right now, we've got damaged fencing around it, there's holes in the ground cover. It's not really safe for children to play on that equipment with all the holes and for them not being the correct ADA compliant ground cover you're supposed to have or whatever the law is that governs that. Anyone who gets hurt on that playground equipment has a lawsuit that would be successful because it is a city park. We could, if we do a park grant program, approach city council and offer them the same kind of paperwork that we have here, like with facade grants and with parking lot grants, where we say, okay, we've got some money, we're willing to help repair and maintain things in the park for you, but here are the things that you're going to have to guarantee that you're doing for us. And one of that might be that whoever it is who does the mowing, that they have to go and they have to rake the material underneath that playground, they have to make sure those holes are filled in so there's no place where kids can be injured. So in the process of mowing, they also get off their mower and they spend 30 minutes maintaining that and the city agrees to help maintain that playground equipment. It's similar to, I'm not complaining here, it's similar to keep West Walkeny beautiful, putting in the two beautiful fire beds at the front entrance that I'm sure looked really great at the beginning, but don't tend to get watered now. Sometimes have weeds growing and they're not maintained as well as they can be. So I think the crews who are mowing the park could also be maintaining the grounds, particularly if we have other organizations putting in plants. The basketball nets are missing, the poles out there are damaged, wonderful area to be able to play basketball in, but if it's not maintained, I don't know that the EDC won't be putting money into that if we don't have some kind of agreement with the city to be able to do that. The bathrooms are not being cleaned regularly. My understanding is that one of our citizens at Gospel Fest had to go in, had to put toilet paper in, had to clean up debris off the floor and that it was fairly disgusting, that there were clothing or bags or something left there in trash, so they picked up some of the trash, but the rest of it is kicked over into the corner because it was too disgusting for them to pick up and possibly, I would say, not safe, they didn't have gloves and safety equipment. If people are using drugs in those bathrooms, then we don't know what kind of stuff is there on those floors. So I had mentioned to Mary that maybe the city ought to have what they do in public bathrooms. When I go into Staples or in Walmart, there's a nice little shape that the people who clean the bathroom have to sign. have the sign date when they've done it. And on that sheet, it also says, here's a number to call to report if the bathroom needs to have some help. We had a sheet like that inside those bathrooms. Person cleaning it signs it and their boss, who I guess would be the head of Public Works, would then go and check those sheets periodically, make sure they're done. And maybe at the end of the week, they pull those sheets and they bring them up to City Hall. And then the city secretary puts them in a folder. So city council and others can inspect, make sure they're being done. Rhett went out after our last meeting, after he, you know, talked about the importance of the park. And he went and he personally cleaned and worked hard cleaning up the park and hosing off one of those pavilions and all to make them nice and in good shape. We need, I think, a personal opinion is to actually have a grant program written up where we do that. But that's kind of up to y'all, so.
If a park board gets established, which has been a work in progress, Craig, just don't take yours, where will they receive their funding?
So the last sort of button, the most recent park committee, I think is what they were calling it, was not receiving funding at all. They were just kind of organizing. The main goal at that time, they were working, they were trying to pull more events to the park. As far as funding, that was still up in the air and hadn't been decided. But their current ordinance and everything in place for that does not, they don't have funding.
So where does the money go from Mark on the list?
It's still in the Mark on the list, yeah. Because it was never decided.
At the time that we had somebody that was working the park, we had a predator.
Yes.
And they lived, they stayed right there and they worked the park. They had so many hours and so on like that. And I'm just wondering what happened? What happened with that? I know expense and so on, but I just, because that worked out beautifully for at least a year and a half that I can remember, the guy being there.
From what I have understood, I don't put money, because I was not here to know exactly. It was an expense situation.
Yeah.
We do have Morgan. She is considered our park host. So we have, she's the one that checks everybody in, that comes and stays at the park. But nobody specifically staying at the park like we used to have. I know it's kind of been talked about, but it's just depending on an expense and things. Because there was no, there was no money salary, no salary budgeted for parks in the past two years that I can be 100% on.
It seems like for us, without getting too deep into becoming the Parks Department, that grant seems like an ideal situation. And then if the park board does get established, they come to us, ask for money for different things.
That would make sense.
We would be heading down a trail of consistently funding projects there just because that's what we decide to do versus actually being asked for that money. The way we're going now, it's like, hey, something needs to be fixed. We propose it just for the good of the city, trying to be bringing this business to the city. They drive through the park. We don't want the park in disarray. So I think we're stepping kind of outside of our specialty. But the grant would be awesome because at that point, a park department cannot be effective if they don't have some kind of funding. And that would give them, we would be an avenue for them for funding, so.
I think we should see if any of the West Waukany. Like, self-tax? No. Well, just overall, we all pay self-tax. Going to plan them. Or school tax, I'm sorry.
You're talking about school tax. In order for us to get any of the school tax money, we have, we have to take that before the school board.
We need to do that. These kids don't hear that benefit from it at all.
Great point.
We all pay it.
So how can we rally and help get a park board established? Because that seems to be the missing.
The hardest part, though, I've seen it was found is that there's not enough volunteers. There's a ton of boards, ton of missions within the city, but not enough committed volunteers. Before they, and they didn't disband it. It was just kind of put on pause. They said two or three members at the time. And then it felt they'd be very effective that way. So I think we brought back out, trying to get people to help and have a time and commitment. It would be beneficial. I just don't know if there's enough volunteers in the city.
I think if they were showing a clear avenue to where they could get money to make a difference, I wouldn't volunteer for somebody.
That was a question. Yes. That was a good question.
If we could establish a way for somebody at the park board, yes, we are going to set a certain amount of money aside, be able to offer grants for certain programs. But we need somebody to take that initiative and say, yes, these are the things we want done. Here's a grant application. Then we can do our job, right?
And I think that what you, what you said matches, and I think what you guys all kind of hear me saying, or the hesitation that I'm having, that I haven't just jumped on this, let's go replace those two pavilions. I've got the bid. I would love to do it. But I, I think maybe we need that program written up first, a grant program first, before we step in, we do that. So that we have some, some way of managing to make sure that the money that we give is going to, you know, not be destroyed. It's going to, that the city is going to have a contract with us to maintain and do what they need to do with it. And I think that's part of what we're required to do when they talk about us having the performance contracts when we give money and that there's a clawback clause. So there would be something similar to, okay, if I grant you $1,800 for a door and you agree that you're going to put up a camera and a light and you're going to clean the bathrooms and make sure they're being monitored. And then you don't put up the camera and the lights and they're not monitored. And then they get damaged, then you need to, we have a clawback clause. You have to give us half of that money back. You know, some kind of a, it's a penalty. If we gave this money because this was supposed to be happening, it didn't happen. So now we're kind of taking it back. I'm not sure city council particularly care for that, but I think maybe they will. Maybe it's a motivator, accountability behind it, yes.
I think what you're proposing is a great idea personally. At least put some guidelines in place of how we make decisions. And hopefully someday, somebody's asking us to make those decisions and not just us round tabling amongst ourselves and pointing things need be done.
And when we tell them before on the bathroom, we were not going to clean it. They had to maintain it. They agreed.
Is that solely the responsibility of Public Works?
That's just taken on, yes.
Do they, oh, I'm sorry.
No, so they supposed to be cleaning it Fridays, every Friday.
Is Public Works in a position to where somebody within that group would be able to come to us for grants? Are they, is that?
There's not, there's not an avenue for it, but if we created one, I think yes.
Because whoever's in charge of it needs access to capital to be able to make any improvements. Otherwise, it's just a complaint board, right? So JD's our head of Public Works. So say that he realizes roofs need to be done. Then he goes and says, hey, okay, where can I get the money to do these roofs? And hooks all avenues. So we would be one of those avenues, especially where the grant structure would come into play.
Yeah, I think if there was a structure in place, that would be a lot easier to follow that through.
Well, you know, I appreciate David putting in the bid. I appreciate John putting in the bid. And I feel bad for them because this is when, you know, they're sitting out there going, come on, guys, you know, we're here, we're able to do this. But if you explain to David and I'll explain to John, you know, we've, we've got to do this the right way forward because I think what we're looking at, a little exciting because I think what we're looking at is being on the verge of actually creating a program that really does help the whole city propel forward in a way that we can get a policy in place and we can get park taken care of in a more consistent pattern that'll stay there. I know what I'm saying. We didn't get it in the light. Well, and there's no penalty if you don't have a clawback clause. So you need to have it in writing. And then, you know, let's say you have all new city council in four years and you have new city staff, you know, in four years. And even if it's in writing, they can go, well, but we're not doing it. We don't agree. But if there's a, you have to give us $900 back. Well, I'm saying it's like we did with the restaurant. He said, you have to maintain. We'll pay for the bathroom. You have to maintain. And there shouldn't be any questions, okay? They always put it in writing. They sign it and move on. I like a financial penalty. I like that clawback clause. And so it sounds like we're all kind of on the same page. So I think what I'd like to ask for now is the chair would entertain a motion for us to establish a city park improvement grant program before we provide any money or do any work in the park.
I think we could wrap that. And then we've already done a lot of legwork by getting the quotes. You just make a couple of nudges. Say, hey, the money's here and the quotes are here, but there's a process that has to be gone through to get it. And by pointing that out and showing that pathway, maybe that'll start something that, that can end up, you know, dominoing. And then we're looking at basketball courts and other things. But if we don't show somebody the avenue to come get money that is actually in charge of it, we're not in charge of the park. If we show somebody that is in charge of the park that avenue, then I would think that it would, it gets more eyes on it and makes a bigger impact.
We could pass that today. I can write it up. I can present it to city council at the city council meeting where I'm presenting the finalization of our plan and everything else. And it can be something that city council then knows we've got it. Since we're not putting a dollar amount on it, it becomes very easy. It's just this grant is available. You come to us with the amounts that you think you need.
Sounds like a move in the right direction to me.
All right. So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to establish a grant program for the parks.
I'll second that. All right, I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor? I'm assuming you're in favor.
I understand you made the motion.
All right, so now let's go to doing the final approval for the city comprehensive, the West Waukany EDC comprehensive plan. All right, so I want to remind you, for Mary, Cindy, and Casey, y'all weren't here, so you don't have the history that this plan has been working and begun being put in place starting in February. First of all, I want to let y'all know that we do not do a comprehensive plan for the city. That is not our job. And sometimes people get confused. The city always has had a comprehensive plan. This is the one from 1995. The one from 2017 is at my house. The current one was the one they just approved from 2025. This is the city's comprehensive plan. The city is the one that does the full comprehensive plan with the maps, the drawings, the topulation, what they're going to do, what they need to do for growth. And their plan is a 20-year plan. The reason that we are putting anything in at City Hall is because we had a five-year plan that was passed in 2023 by this board and city council that we very quickly in February voted to discontinue and that I went before city council and we got them to vote to discontinue. The 2023 plan had many, many, many problems for the three of you who weren't here. It had the wrong information on population. It had that our population was decreasing significantly, that our city growth was decreasing, that West Waukany had no money. We were basically deteriorating down to nothing. So when the city pays, I don't know how many thousands of dollars for Jacob Martin to do, Martin to do a good comprehensive plan, and then the EDC is sitting with a plan that says the opposite information, that is not good for business because, and they published this on the website that we got taken down, that is not good for business because if I own a business and I'm coming, I want to see if I want to put that in West Waukany and that EDC has put out there that our population is dwindling, that our growth is dwindling, that we're not basically as a town being able to survive, well, you're not going to want to bring your business here. So we scrapped that and the new plan is very simple. It looks complex, but it is not. And the reason that y'all do not have folders is I'm saving money because it was $56 just to buy three folders. So city staff and the mayor can have one in a folder. If y'all want me to go out and put yours in folders, I can do that.
Okay, the mayor has to pay for it, so.
So what is the population? The population at this time, if you go to the very back of this, in 2025, our population is 2,413. And it is growing. And it is growing in the area around us. And our city is growing. Our sales tax revenue is growing. And so what this comprehensive plan is, it says 20 years because what we voted on and approved was for me to put together what the EDC does and for me to correct the errors that were in this other five-year plan and that it is to match the comprehensive plan that Jacob Martin did. Jacob Martin planned this for 20 years. Our plan is for 20 years. We're going to match it. Essentially, what this plan is in some total would be the very first thing that's written in our plan at the back. Working in all ways possible to assist the city of West Waukany in implementing the comprehensive plan developed by Jacob and Martin and adopted by the city council in 2025. The ongoing growth in this city emphasizes the importance of strategic planning and infrastructure development to support the expanding population and needs of the community. And the West Waukany EDC will be an active participant in this growth. When, Casey, when you came on and you volunteered to do this and I told you, I'm so grateful that you were doing this. And you said, now tell me what the EDC does. This plan helps explain to everyone what the EDC does. It just explains where an EDC gets its money and stuff, tax revenue, where the laws are that apply to what EDCs do. For anybody who looked at this, anyone can walk in from the public and read it. City council's going to get it so they then understand it. I have a presentation that will be a PowerPoint presentation for them at the, that very next city council meeting where I will go over and explain this to them. How do you get on the EDC? Where you've got an application. We all know that because we're so one out to be here. What are EDC member requirements? It's listed here, so now they know. And now I don't have to get a call from somebody at the city staff that says, oh, Donna, can an EDC member be from outside of the city limits? The answer is yes. And the requirements are here about where people live and what they do. We are listed as the board of directors. We're just listed in, in no particular order. It was a random order that I just listed them. I'm working all the time. After what I went, I probably should have put them in alphabetical order. But they, they're just listed as they came to me. Our mission statement and our vision statement are the same that they've always been. We haven't voted to change that. We're not going to change that. We've got that on all of our EDC websites with the city. Page nine, just make sure that everyone understands that we work with the city. While we are a separate corporation from the city, we work with the city hand in hand. We've already, all this stuff we already established. So I'm going over stuff that you guys already know because this is what we passed back for, to be put together back in February. I have our Bring Back Our Bucs campaign in here, so everyone knows that's an example of us working with city hall. It's the city councilman member, Chad Jacoby, his wife who brought it to me. Chad had talked about it many times at city council that we need to make sure everyone is cutting West Waukany with that zip code so that we're getting those sales caps. This board passed and we have that companion here. Infrastructure development, we all know that's what we do. We've got $100,000 budgeted for this next year to help with infrastructure. And the project that's in here. And the project that's in here is a picture of the project that's being built right now across the street in front of Deer Run, and all investment that the EDC has been a part of since 2022. Then we have our grant programs. The aside grant program is updated with our grant percentages that we passed. So this matches what we are doing currently today. The parking lot grant program, I was pretty sure you guys were going to pass this, so I'll put it in our comprehensive plan. And then we have regular financial loans and grants, which is what we do for businesses and the things that they need here. We reestablished our business of the month, and that's now going out on the Facebook page. I'm going to tell you something about that that's important for everyone on this board to know. The businesses are thrilled. We changed, for those of you who are new, we changed from having a program where businesses had to apply, they had to fill out paperwork, then the board had to meet, decided they had the qualifications to be the business of the month. If they didn't fill out all the paperwork, then it got passed, and they had to wait until next month. We changed that to where we honor every business in this city from A to Z. And this week, for November, we are on to Billy's Donuts, and the businesses love it. Went to Billy's Donuts to show her off Facebook, the Facebook page on Sunday, and she said that we've already had all the churches come in here and tell us that we were the business of the month for November. She was very excited. The other thing about doing it the way that we're doing it is that I have to go to every single business in this city as I'm going through that from A to Z, because they have to sign a release to have their name posted on anything in social media with the city. That's a law. They passed that ordinance back in 2017. So while people weren't doing it, the city wasn't doing it, by law, we have to do it. So I have them sign that. I keep that in the file, that the business has said, yes, we can post and say their name, and the businesses are loving it. We also are posting on there when people receive their grant, so the Facebook page shows the grant. And are we cutting that on our city EDC? So we've got the two locations that we're getting up there. For the first time ever, we passed that brochure and made that brochure advertising the city that everyone has. So there's just a quick copy of that for people to see, and the list of all the brochure placement locations that you guys have already seen and know about. We support the events, the financial sponsorships and active participation. So these are the pictures from the bicycling event, the Cotton Touch Challenge that we just did, and advertising that we had. And the table at the top is a picture from the table that was set up at the HCEA luncheon that we just did over in Moana. We have the job development program that we're doing. Part of the thing EDCs do is they promote job development, and we are doing that with our, doing the Texas Workforce work at the library and providing that grant for them, which is budgeted in again for next year. And then Casey had the great question, and I thought, you know what? Nowhere in any of these forms is there a calendar to let people know exactly what we do. Here is our yearly calendar. So these are the operations of how the EDC operates. So now the city, our board members, the public can see, this is what we do every month. We're not limited to this. This lets everyone know this is monthly, how it is that we go about looking at things and how our budget was kind of set. Then we have a page that talks about the importance of truth and being friendly. And then it's actually the last two pages that set up our goals. Every one of these goals in here are the goals that y'all have talked about in here, and you have asked for it. And one of the reasons that it's so important that we changed the goals, I'm going to read to you the fourth goal in the old plan, just because I enjoy reading it so much. Mary gets to hear me read it multiple times, so I come in. So the 2023 fourth goal for the EDC was this, and if any of you can tell me what this means, go free. The fourth goal is to ensure accessibility to the knowledge necessary for understanding the process.
That's the whole thing?
That's the whole thing. That's the goal. I thought I was reading from a campaign speech from Kamala Harris. There were only five goals in the 2023 plan, and that's how they kind of read. We all know we attract new business, and we're trying to support business. We don't have to have that spelled out in vague process words. So when you read these two pages, you'll see exactly what it is we're doing. The only goal that I added in here, and if y'all want me to take it out, I will, but I don't want to, it's the very last goal. Increase sales tax revenue for the city significantly with the plan to have adequate funding to hire a City of West Walkeney Economic Development Corporation Director to assume many of the responsibilities currently being handled by the president, a non-paid volunteer. I think that came to me when I'm hitting about 30 hours a week of work on this thing. I would love to see us have enough money to pay a director to do this kind of work for the board. You know, Debbie Garter is paid as a director of Quinlan EDC. The EDC director at Emory is paid. The EDC directors that you got to meet at the wonderful workshop two weeks ago, they're all paid. So I'd like to see our city get to the point that we have enough businesses that we can do that. Until we do, it'll still be volunteer, and I will continue to do that for you.
What do they get paid? You know?
What is their salary? Just a couple of thousand.
Well, we, we're talking $50 a week.
Yeah, it really depends on the size of the city and the budget. I will tell you, Mayor Burkhart said that I, he is very excited. He grew, yeah, I should be paid exactly what he paid to be mayor. I said, that's not helpful. So this is our plan. We just need to get it done and into city council. Again, it's always a work in progress. It can always be changed. This is just something that was committed to be done back in February, and I've finally got it done for you guys.
So this is obviously your target, right? This is your 20-year vision. Is there, and I'm new to this, three, four months in now, do you guys have, sit down to create an annual plan, like put some goals in place for the actual year that we're dealing with?
We do. That's our budget.
That's the budget?
Mm-hmm. That's how we budget it, and when you look at the yearly list, what we do on a calendar that you asked about, that kind of puts it out, you know, pretty clearly about the things that we're doing, with the grants, the budget that we do, those are our goals. Those are our planners. So I didn't want to show this, just even though the city council wants it, giving, sending me texts, emails, give it to us. I've said, you'll wait till we get it, even though it's a formality, you're going to wait till we get it out on Monday. So I can give it to them for that, and let them know, here's what we do, what we're offering. All right, so I would entertain a motion that we go ahead and move forward with this. It can be done with that one. We've got a long list for me to go over with you guys.
Let me ask you this. Obviously, I want a little bit of time just to look at it. Is it something that would have to wait until next meeting if I say, hey, can I get five days to review it? Is that something that, any major changes would have to wait until next meeting? That's a stretch.
Yeah. So if you approve it and you want to make changes in it in December, we can make changes in December. We just want to, we just need to get it over the line, get it over the goal line here, because this is something council asked for me to get done and to them back in the spring. It just hasn't been possible. And I tell you, I'm working 30 hours a week on this stuff. I'm working 30 hours a week on this stuff.
I'm all foot moving it forward for what it is, but I think that as long as it can be modified if needed.
Anytime, any meeting. Go through it and make the modifications. Let's just get it over the goal line here so we get one touchdown, the game's not done.
Good enough.
All right, so I would entertain a motion that we approve it with the understanding that it always can be modified.
I'll make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan as long as it be modified.
I'll second that.
All right, I've got a motion to approve it as long as it occurs to be modified and it can. In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the next thing is to discuss or take action on the I Heart Dinner event. So the I Heart Dinner is November 20th. We have bought a table that has eight seats. I need to know who is going to be sitting at our table. So I know Chris and I are going to be there. My husband's going to be there with me. You're sitting at the city table, correct? You're sitting at the fire department table, correct? Cindy, are you and David able to come and sit at our table? Okay. Are you sitting at the EDC table? Are you sitting at the?
No, I couldn't, I couldn't, we couldn't sit at the EDC table. They put me in in a chamber table.
Okay. Well, are you in at the chamber table?
They put me out, yeah, they put me in.
Okay, so stay at the chamber table.
Stay at the chamber.
Stay at the chamber table. Casey, did you and your wife come?
I want a date again, please.
November 20th.
November 20th.
At six o'clock.
I will have to circle back. What, is that a weekday, Monday through Thursday possibly?
Thursday is not, is it Thursday night? Got all these dates running crazy. November's kind of booked, and I'm remembering. It's a Thursday evening.
Thursday.
Try and get your wife to come, please.
Yeah, she's the planner.
It's very, it's very good. It's a once-a-year deal that we started back when I was president there, and it is a fantastic evening.
As long as we don't have anything conflicting, be happy to be there.
Out of all the businesses, you know, all the tables are, all the tables have been 28. It's 28 tables.
All right, so good, we're set on that, and I want to let y'all know about the centerpiece. So I'm not telling you what the centerpieces are.
You know, you got to go up against us, right?
That's right. So there is a competition for the centerpiece of that table, which I didn't know about because I haven't been to this thing before. So there's a competition, and the fire department seems to win one last time, wins a lot of the time. So we're not letting Kathy know what the centerpiece is. And the city has two tables. So I will say this, the city's table, their second table and the EDC table, the centerpieces all connect, and so that's all you're going to get to know. But y'all don't have to worry about putting any of it together. I've spent way too much money. I have all my own personal money, so don't worry about it.
She's really excited, as you can tell. We can, we're going to do it.
Were you starting to worry about it?
Last year was good. It really was. Last year was good.
So no action needs to be taken on that. I just want to make sure that we're on, everyone kind of knows.
I left her, I knew I was out.
She, you knew that, you knew. All right, so let's go on to number 12, discuss and or take action regarding the building and the property. So I want to let y'all know that we, right now, have three people who want to rent that property. We have the pastor, who wants to do it for the food pantry. We have John English, who wants to do it for his storage and his use and his workout here with all of this construction. And we have the city. The mayor wants to rent it and wants to put a bathroom in it and wants to use it as part and extension of the city. We can't do any of that until we have it insured, but we're not discussing any of those things today because we're kind of stuck. So this discussion is, Mary, what's the status of getting it insured?
So there's been a lot of communication issues between me and our, our address, our underwriter, our person, our point of contact at TML. She's wanting to plan a time to come out here, take a look at it, put an evaluation on it, and then put it on the schedule. That's as far as she's gotten on it. I also have a few other things on her to-do list that I haven't done yet, so I'll follow up again and see where she has to go. Then I will. I've come for it.
So at this point, we'll do no action on that one.
Great job on the finish out of that building, by the way. Taking a spot there last time to see it. I've never seen inside of it.
Nice building. I have, can't really go without.
I'm going to go check it out. Someone's going to see it.
John would like me to post pictures of it. He's, I'm sure he's watching right now on YouTube. He would like me to post pictures of all of this wonderful construction work. And not till we get it insured, and then we're ready to go ahead and move forward with entertaining, you know, who wants to rent it for how much. But I think we're going to be able to get it rented with no problem. All right, so now we're going to move on to future agenda items, which is something that would normally be very short, however, it's not. So I want to give you guys all a really quick rundown of what's going to be coming up in the future, because it's going to be coming up fast. All right, the first is Sylvia, who's been a wonderful secretary. Her last day with us will be at the December meeting, and then she's going to retire and she's going to be done with doing the secretarial work. So we definitely want to see you next meeting, and we're going to miss you. So on the next agenda will be for us to discuss if we want to hire another secretary to do that position, or if we want to do it differently. If y'all want me to just do it. Right now, what we've implemented is Sylvia does some minutes, she sends them to me, I review and make corrections, and then we're good to go, and we both sign them. And if you notice, for you two members who have been here in the past, if you've noticed, we've never had to go back and correct any minute, because when you have two heads looking at something, you know you've got it right. That'll be a future agenda item. The next future agenda item, which is going to be very significant, is to keep West Walkeney beautiful signs that they were paid for. And here's the situation that we have, and here's how we're going to solve it. But does everyone here know the problem we have with that?
No.
All right, so a couple of years ago, they came up with a great plan. They produce and make these beautiful signs to go at the entrance of each city on 276. So when you come off the Two Mile Bridge, here's this beautiful sign for West Walkeney, and when you're coming in from Quinlan, beautiful sign in the back of it saying, welcome, come back. They came to the EDC and they asked for money for that sign. The EDC put that on their agenda that predated me. A motion was made. Kathy was the one who made the motion that said, we'll approve to give them $10,000 to make these two signs. Kathy's motion was very clear, on the condition that they have the proper approvals from TxDOT and from SRA to be able to do it. Well, there was, they attempted to. There was some miscommunication. The $10,000 has gone for those signs. So our EDC has paid $10,000 for these two beautiful signs that are made. One's made, the other one's in the process of being made, and you can't get the money back. Two beautiful signs that you notice have not gone up. There has been, I would say, two years of a kerfuffle here in this city. The citizens upset about it, council upset, East West Walkeney Beautiful wants to put those signs up. They haven't been able to. It's quite a thing. The church down here coming off of Two Mile Bridge, right in front of the golf course, they approached them and they said, yes, we will help. You can put one of those signs here on our property, because TxDOT wasn't allowed to be on their property. You can put it on our property, just outside of the TxDOT part on the easement. It's just a little part. It's just like a nine by 10, an eight by six. I mean, it's just a little piece of property, and you can rent it from us at $300 a year, and you can put your sign up. So East West Walkeney Beautiful came back and said, all right, that's what we'll do. We got to have approval to do that, and you got to have a lease agreement. Well, we've got a very good city attorney. He's wonderful, and she looked at it, and she did this on word, because the church wants to be held harmless from anything that might happen with that sign. So let's say somebody who's drunk falls asleep, runs off the road, and runs into the sign. That's a lawsuit. They're going to get an attorney, there's going to be a lawsuit. The city cannot insure it through TML because the city or the EDC doesn't own that property. And no matter what kind of lease agreement you have on a property, you cannot have a lease agreement that holds harmless the owner of the property. So to put it in simple terms, it's like, okay, I own a house, and I rent it out to John. I can have a lease agreement with John that says, I'm held harmless from anything that happens while you're renting my house. But we all know that if their visitor falls off the roof and breaks his back, they're suing John, they're suing my homeowner of my house, and they're suing me. Doesn't matter what my lease agreement says. You can't write a legal agreement that says I'm held harmless if I'm the owner of the property. So if the church owns that little square, we can't insure it, and they can't be held harmless. harmless, so the sign can't go up. So we've come up with a solution, and that is, the EDC can purchase that little block of land. So the church has agreed, as of this weekend, they like it, they get it. They don't want to be legally liable for anything to happen on it. They will sell the EDC, that small square of land, for $3,600.
Oh, wow.
So then, we own it, we'll have a purchase agreement written up by our attorney that says, if something happens and the EDC goes away, that land goes back to the church. We can't, we're not selling it, it's not going anywhere else. We're talking about a little square in front of their church. But that way, we do two things. First, we get these signs up that we paid for, citizens all want to see, taken care of and go up. And you guys all know how we work. We're gonna make sure that sign goes up safely, it goes up well, it's gonna be done in such a way that we're not gonna have to do repairs on it, and we're gonna make sure that it's done so it doesn't fall down on anything, it'll be well installed. Because I'm gonna take over in my general contracting role to make sure that it's done.
That's just this end, though, right?
That is just this end. So I'll talk to you about the other end in just a minute. So we're, we're gonna have Lee go ahead and draw up the contract to make that purchase. That's gonna go before City Council, at the next City Council meeting. Then at our December meeting, y'all will, then, it'll be a future agenda item, we'll go do a formal vote where you say yes. Let's go ahead and make that purchase, and we agree with the documents that have all been signed up. So I'm gonna be bringing you those legal documents, so we can move forward in that.
Does that have to be replanted? Do they have to replant the property to show that that little piece is no longer attached to their property?
We may have to have a survey company be involved, and we will make sure that all of that is taken care of. So that's coming up in December. Now, the next thing that's coming up, brought to Kathy's point about the secondary sign. The secondary sign, which would go down on the side coming from Quinlan, I have suggested to Keep West Waukegan Beautiful to just pause just a little bit on that, because the next thing that's coming up before our committee, probably coming up in January, is gonna be, I have Mary looking into the cost to be able to expand the sewer and water from where it ends, which is just before Groom and Sons. I'd like for us to note, find out what the cost is to expand it, so that we can have water sewer that goes all the way down to the end of where our city actually is. Because we have a large distance of property from Groom and Sons down to where the city is. If Groom and Sons would like to be annexed in and be part of the city. In order to annex them in, part of the thing that they get is they get to go on the sewer. They don't have sewer, they have septic. That means we've got to upgrade that sewer system to be able to bring them in, to be able to be on our sewer system. There's no point for them to be annexed into our city, and for us to get their sales tax and their, that extra revenue, if they don't get the benefit of being on sewer. Well, if we're gonna have to pay to upgrade that sewer system anyway, we might as well make sure we do it to the point that we can incorporate the other businesses that are coming down also, because we do have other businesses that are now coming in there. And then the question is, on the north side, between 276 and the lakefront, we have housing developments coming in. Those housing developments that are just outside the city limits are all having to go on septic. If we get this installed, any new development that comes in there may have the option to go on sewer. We're not ready to discuss that again here yet, but I wanted you guys to know that that, I've asked Mary to look at that, we're talking about that, I'm talking with the mayor about it, and so we're hesitating on what we do about the sign, because we want to wait and see if we do that. If we can do that, then we can expand all the way down, we can do maybe a small purchase of property in the same way that we're doing down here with the church, and get the other sign cut out. Okay, so that will be coming up. Anyone in here who has a question about the sales tax workshop, who did not attend, call me, you can come by, you can look at the new laws that apply. Okay, so I've got it here, if you'd like to do that. And, alright, told you about publishing all the projects in the newspapers that have to be done. We need to be prepared in the future, future agenda item, we may end up having the hotel capel development applying for additional grants or additional money at some point. We're putting in this parking lot grant, it would be pretty foolish for me not to anticipate we may have a future agenda item that involves them reaching out to us. Vox Industries has owned that property down the way, and it's been talked up about them moving out here. They can't move their business here, because at this point, because they don't have the infrastructure with the electricity to be able to do the work that they do. There's gonna have to be a new...
Substation. The substation will have to have upgrades, is how it's been planned.
So that will probably be on a future agenda item, because Shannon, and Mary, and the mayor, and me, a little bit on the periphery, I'm there as much as possible, whatever they need. Then we'll be working with Farmers Electric to see what we need to do about that substation, and there may be a point in the future that they come back in front of this board, maybe get some assistance for that. That's the infrastructure money that we have the availability to do legally, to help them do that. Then we've got Mike Gibbs and his wife, they want to build a new billiards hall focusing on not just being able to play pools, but also be training kids to be able to play competitively. They are wanting to purchase the land between Dollar General and the First Baptist Church. They haven't purchased it yet, but if they do, and they get the go-ahead, that the state says, yes, it's far enough away from the church to be able to do that, they'll be there, then they'll be purchasing that, and then I know they'll be coming in here presenting and talk to us about the new billiards business.
They're, they're looking at another beach down the road here, another beach to purchase.
Awesome, that would be, that would be such, such an easier thing, rather than buy a river. And I also mentioned to Shannon that she might want to mention to them to look at maybe going to Karen Houston to buy the Big D BBQ building, because that had a builder in it, and it's already got a kitchen, everything's already set up. So, and it got a nice parking area and the nice front building. The Big D's BBQ. Oh, they could rehab that, they could put a billiard hall in there, rehab that, make a beautiful front, it would be less expensive for them to do it. And they've got the gray parking area, we could, and then move out these ramps, it'll help to do that. I'd love to see that business come to life.
They're really excited, from what I've heard in their presentation last month at the conference. They're really, I hope we're talking to them.
Yeah, well, and, and everybody who talks to them say, you know, gotta keep saying, talk to Karen Houston about that Big D BBQ place, because it's in good shape, and they could rehab it pretty easily, and it's a great location.
Yeah, I'll shoot them tomorrow, I'll, I'll mention that.
Please tell them that.
I will, definitely.
And then the last thing is Donovan Nays owns the property next to Ten Cup, where they used to have Catfish Restaurant, it was a steakhouse a short period of time. He and his family have, his son has also bought the property next to the Chamber for Commerce, and they now own two properties. With the property next to Ten Cup, they have a business called Endless Summer Youth and our, and Event Center. They're building an event center, they're going to have beach volleyball, they've got three putting holes, they're gonna have the center set up so it can be rented, it can be used for events. And he's apparently got a pretty good resume in terms of doing this, over the history of his life, doing it in larger cities like Dallas. Has preliminary documents kind of written up, but I told him, there's no reason to come in here yet to us, because you don't have anything you're asking from us, and made sure he knew to be, keep, stay in touch with Shannon, get his permit, because again, the nice thing about all of our legal grants, you have to have your permit, and you have to follow current ordinance more than it does before we will grant money. So those are all gonna be future agenda items, so this is what you're looking at for 2026. Alright, now...
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of new stuff.
A lot of things happening.
And it's less than 30 hours a week, Larry. So Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll thank you. We are adjourned at seven...
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Thank you, guys.